Good evening and welcome to the Maple Plain City Council meeting. It is Monday, June 25th at 7:03 and I'm calling the meeting to order. Please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm looking for a motion to adopt the agenda. Moved by Cahill?
Second.
Second by Fay. And we, up for discussion, we are going to remove letter E and letter F under new business because those are CUPs and that requires four of us to be in attendance. We are not able to do that tonight so we will address those issues at our next meeting. Any other additions or changes? All right, all in favor opposing with removing eight E and eight F. Aye. Opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries. Next item of business is a proclamation for Hercules Incorporated celebrating their 50 years of business. And we are honored tonight to have Les and June, the founder and CEO's with us tonight, who first lived in Maple Plain in 1961. So, this is for Hercules. Whereas Hercules has served as a business in Maple Plain since 1968, Hercules has provided jobs to residents of Maple Plain and set an example of a model business. And whereas Hercules has played an integral role in serving Maple Plain and its surrounding communities, Hercules has dedicated 50 years of exceptional service to Maple Plain. And whereas Hercules dedication to service in the community is unprecedented, Hercules has a long history of donating countless resources for community events, private companies, and individuals. Now therefore, the Maple Plain City Council does hereby congratulate Hercules on 50 years of excellent service to Maple Plain and the surrounding communities. Be it resolved, the Maple Plain City Council wishes to thank Hercules for all their dedicated service to our community. The city of Maple Plain announces with great pleasure that Monday, June 25th, 2018 be known as Hercules Day, as proclaimed on the 25th day of June by the Maple Plain City Council. So Les and June, please come forward and if you'd like to hold the mic, you can say a few things if you'd like. If you want to speak, you have to go to the mic. So we can hear you.
Start with you.
I'm June Nielsen, Les's wife, and I'm just pleased that you invited us here tonight. It's quite an honor for us. And we have been thankful for the community. We've known quite a few people. We've known Les's former employer for many years. And it's just a fine, fine community. Thank you.
Again, thank you for inviting us and I feel bad that the invitations didn't get to you folks because we were hoping you guys would all get to walk through and see you. But if you'd like to have a private tour sometime, we'd be pleased to do that. After a council meeting or if you wanted to do it with the police fire department too, we could do it, you know? So, we'd be pleased to do that. We want it all to know about it and to come. So, I guess, June and I, just a little history. We, in 61, were working for Bergman-Sallow Company, we had the Sallow Company in Esthown, and we moved here and lived in a trailer house for three years on the property there, where Tricay is now, we did. And at that time, when our son got to be about three years old, then we bought a house in Plymouth on 55 and County Road 6 and we've been there for the last 55 years or so. But, thank you much.
Thank you, June and Les. It's because of great businesses like yours that makes Maple Plain such a great city.
Thank you.
We'd love to get a picture of you with the council.
Okay.
Oh, we like the Maple Plain.
Yeah, just right here.
John Fay. Congratulations.
We're glad you're here. So our next item of business is a consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Moved to approve by Cahill?
Mayor, can I pull the council payable off for a couple of questions?
Yes, you may. All right, with that, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, letters B, C, D, and E.
So moved?
Moved by Cahill?
Second.
Second by Fay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. All right, let's go back to accounts payable then, Councilmember Fay.
Okay, a couple of quick questions, Bobby. First page.
Yep.
Cement blocks, are those the cement blocks that are downtown?
Yes.
What are we trying to, they're already purchased, what are we doing, protecting the wellhead?
Yes, yep. Anyone has, well, there is a access issue by having that where it's at. So those cement blocks protect that.
Looks hideous.
Hopefully with tonight, we can move forward and get that capped quickly.
Thank you.
Good deal.
Is that a clerical error on City of Independence Frontier? Or are we actually paying $1,778 for telephoning May?
I'll have to look into that. That could be, that does look like a clerical error. It should be split right down the middle. So it is $178.38 there.
Ellers and Associates disclosure fee, does that have to do with the bond sale?
Ellers and Association, yeah, but that's for all of our bonds that we have with Ellers. There's a, like, annual service fee that we have to provide them.
Okay, I know, okay, so that's an aggregate of four or five different?
Yep.
Okay.
They're about $250 apiece, so there actually should be three of them right there.
We've got finalized permits for March and April. Are we? That doesn't seem like a lot of building permits, is it? Are we?
Yeah.
Are we slow?
No, it's not us. It's just the process to finalize the permits. Sometimes a job will stay open when they're working on a permit for, I mean, upwards of a year. I've seen it before. So a lot of the times when we pay Metro West inspections, it's for permits that are outside of even this year. That's a common theme.
And then, lastly, would be, I'm guessing Valley Ridge was like the repair on Main asphalt?
Yes, yes it is.
Patch?
It was for a lot of, for all of our water main breaks.
Oh, of course, okay. That's it, for me.
Any further questions regarding accounts payable? With that, looking for a motion to approve accounts payable?
I will make that motion.
Moved by Councilmember Fay?
Second.
Second by Cahill. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Moving on to administrative reports this month. City Engineer, June Monthly Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In your packet is our monthly report and some of the major items that we worked on this past month kind of center around the 2018 Street Improvements Project. We had our pre-construction meeting last week with staff and contractors and subcontractors, utility companies. And they're still checking on some of the questions I think the council had asked at past meetings that they've heard from residents, will the subcontractor who does the paving work do driveways? So we'll get that information out as soon as we hear back from the contractor on that. They plan to start on tree marking and removals in mid-July and the utility work at the end of July. That's later than what they had told us earlier where they said, well, after the 4th, but they mentioned to me outside of the meeting that, you know, some of the, and it seems like we're getting rain. But once they start here in Maple Plain, we're hoping it doesn't rain as much because that's always good for us. But yeah, they're a little delayed on some of their other projects, but they said they're geared up to bring in, you know, two crews to get this work done. They anticipate being done by mid-October. And yeah, so that was good news in the fact that they're geared up with their crews and are ready to come in once they start. They said you won't see us leave, we'll be here every day working to get the project done. There was some further discussions with the contractor on putting in that drain tile and we have talked with Center Point. It's likely that they're going to have to shift their gas line in that area to make sure that the contractor can get the drain tile in properly. And so we're working with that, with them and staff on the restoration and location. Other than that, Meadows at Maple Plain, I don't know if you drove by, but the general contractor was doing some spot repairs on curb and gutter and concrete sidewalk. They are gearing up to pave that final lift of asphalt. So that's been sitting with just the one lift of asphalt. Usually we do that, you know, for one year. This has been sitting a little longer. But then, any settlements, there were some settlements they had to fix, those came out and so they did their patching and they'll get that final lift done soon. And then the only other thing I was going to add is that later on in the meeting we have the announcement for setting the date for our MS4 hearing and we'll, I'm really looking forward to talking about that again this year and moving quickly through that topic and education component at your next meeting, or your end of July meeting. So that's all I had, I can answer any questions.
Thank you. And any concerns with the project starting later? And if there is rain, it's still going to be done before snow flies?
Yes.
Okay, just want to get that on tape because we never know in Minnesota. All right, next, City Planner Monthly Report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Monthly report for the month of June. A lot of stuff that we've already talked about. We attended the, I attended the EDA meeting where you talked about extending the agreement for the downtown redevelopment and staff's been working on that downtown redevelopment project and have had several meetings with the owner of that or the developer for that project. We are working, I had a kind of offline meeting with MinDOT and I'm trying to get an online meeting. I think we've got it set up now with MinDOT and their team to try to talk through access in Highway 12 as it relates to our downtown redevelopment. So, we have that now set up. It takes a while to get some of these meetings with the amount of people that need to be involved. Outside of that, we did, I did attend the Planning Commission meeting. There was two CUP applications which would have been in front of you tonight for two projects that are ongoing. And then, I've had a couple of meetings with some property owners in the downtown or mixed-use district relating to possible redevelopment of some properties. One of them is the Spring Avenue property, my favorite property. I believe we will get an application on that property for redevelopment of not just that property but the property to the south of that as well, on Spring Avenue. So stay tuned, I don't want to oversell.
What are you going to talk about every month?
Well, I don't want to oversell on this, but I think we have something. I had a nice meeting with the, with a developer who's got a purchase agreement on those two properties and I think they'll be moving forward, which could be exciting. I also met with the owner of the schoolhouse building and his architect and talked about that building a little bit. I don't know, they were doing some due diligence on their part on whether or not they could convert some of that space, possibly even residential. So, we'll see what happens with that, but at least it's positive that some things are maybe in the works to move forward on that. And then outside of that, we put a lot of time into the Gateway property as well, just working on all of the things that we've talked with you about but trying to get that project to be able to come before the Planning Commission and City Council in full in the next couple of weeks. So, I continue to work with staff on the nuisance issues and we've got several properties. We've had a meeting on one of the properties and we've written a couple other letters just relating to violations for use of land and/or violation of an existing condition of use permit. So we'll continue to work with staff on following up on those. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions relating to the June planning report.
Any questions? Thank you. Next we'll hear from Wes Hennepin, Chief.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, before you and including your packet is the May 2018 Activity Report for Wes Hennepin Public Safety. Through the end of May, we've handled the total of 3,072 incident complaints. 1,171 of those are in Maple Plain and 1,714 are in Independence. I'll highlight a few cases for you. Kind of a high-profile case that was right on our border in Independence on May 1st. Obviously made the local papers. There was a drive-by shooting that occurred on County Line Road and the railroad tracks right by Stalky Bus. A male party was trying to shoot another party in his vehicle to get revenge on an overdose of a family friend, family member from years prior and within two days, the Wright County Sheriff's Department was able to make an arrest for that. Wes Hennepin was first on scene. We were able to make contact with the victim who had cut marks all over their face from the shattering glass and windshield. And obviously that's not expected in our area, but it's just kind of a reminder that anything can happen anywhere at any time. So, that was a unique case at 2:30 in the morning on May 1st. And then we've kind of been busy with a lot of theft cases in the Maple Plain area and just want to make everybody kind of aware of them so that people keep their eyes and ears peeled, call 911 if they see anything suspicious and to let us know if they see or hear anything. Kind of a good point of that was that in the 5,000 block of Maple Plain on Main Street there on May 16, somebody called the police and said there was two suspicious people walking behind the daycare center at 7:15 and through private yards and around houses, which, you know, may or may not be normal to some people, but wasn't normal to that area. And we ended up finding the two people that admitted that they were just staying at the local motel and they were bored so they went for a walk around people's property. And that's not normal to be walking around people's private homes and so we're able to identify those people and talk with them. And then on May 18th, we did have a theft in the 4,900 block of Highway 12 at one of our liquor stores. Reported that a person entered the store, stole three bottles of liquor, 12 pack of beer. They took off running out of the building with the employee giving chase as well. They got into a vehicle with out-of-state plates and they took off and were unable to locate the suspect or the vehicle. Total loss is about $182. And then on May 19th, at almost 3:00 PM at near Oconia Farm Store, UFC Store at Oak and Bud, an employee working for the store noticed that a male person walking by in the streets reached into the back of a vehicle of a person in their yard while they're doing yard work and took their lawn leaf blower and just kept walking and they had their hoodie up. So the employee of the store started yelling at the suspect, "Hey, drop it, you took that." And then he took off running and we finally were able to find the homeowner and let him know that their leaf blower was stolen. And we checked the area for the suspect and the surrounding area and ditches and we didn't find it. And estimated value is about $100 on that. Then we had a stolen motorcycle, stolen behind 5,000 block of Pioneer Creek Drive. It was stolen about 4:00 in the morning. About 20 hours later, it was found abandoned on a city street in Minnetonka with a blown engine with oil all over the place. So the, it was a nice, what I would call fancy motorcycle, a fast motorcycle that they took for a ride and ended up blowing it up in Minnetonka and ditched it. We have great surveillance video of it, of a white male suspect balding with another person in a hoodie, stealing the motorcycle from the outdoor surveillance there. And we're working some good leads and suspect on that along with some DNA evidence that we were able to collect. And then just a couple other things to note. On May 15th, we had a person stuck in the elevator at 1500 Howard Avenue due to the power outage that we all are aware of and they do not have a backup generator there so therefore they lost power to the elevator and the fire department had to let that person out. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have in regards to the Activity Report, but all is looking well and we'll keep working hard for the citizens of this community.
Thank you. Noticed that you guys have put on about 5,000 more miles already this year compared to last and been out and about. Keeping us safe.
That's only about five days though. No, I'm just kidding.
I was giving you a comp.
We do about 800 a day, on average. Seven to eight hundred, between all shifts.
Okay, wow. Well, thank you. And next we'll have our Public Works, June Report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Public Works has stayed busy the following month. They did some work on the 2004 F-350. I think we're finding that this is becoming a more common trend with this vehicle and as a result, I wouldn't be surprised in the coming months if we start having the conversation about replacing potentially this vehicle. They did some break-in battery work on that vehicle. They're preparing for some MS4 reporting that Dan is going to give a much more detailed description of later in the meeting. They've been working on the city compost site and I do want to make note of this is that this tends to be a spot right now that we're finding that a lot of contractors outside of the community are abusing our compost site. And as a result, that's putting some added stress, not only on city staff, but it's going to have to come down to a point to manage this. Those are all resources. And so I would encourage all of our residents to keep utilizing the compost site, but if you are not a resident or you're a contractor, please do not use our compost site. Public Works has been working with the Minnesota Department of Health for testing on well number four. We ordered a new PC for the public workshop and garage through Brand Networking and our IT. Those computers were six, seven, eight years old. They were pretty old. Installed Bryantwood Park Bench with concrete. Worked with the Long Lake Rotary and the city with the Party in the Park event. Replaced the front tires on the Kubota tractor that we have. We did some, we're doing and continuing to do some park prep for the police and fire softball event. Gary, you got to be looking forward to that one. Should be a good deal. So Gary is the defending champion with the Wes Hennepin Police Department. So that'll be good, Thursday night. Public Works attended the pre-construction meeting with our contractor and Stan Tech for the street reconstruction project as well as the drain tile work on Parkview and curb work on Maple Ridge Drive there. Replaced one of the city's weed whips that we've had for about 10 years old. Public Works attended some safety training and they're working with a resident on locating a water shut-off valve currently right now. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions pertaining to the Public Works, our June Monthly Report.
Any questions? Thank you. Next we'll have the City Administration Report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Here's a few things that City Administration has been working on. Potential development opportunities throughout the city, the 2019 budget, looking for better ways to enforce a compost site as we had talked about, or Bobby had mentioned before. We are going to, and we have proposals for staff evaluation and structural analysis. We're working on preparing for the summer city events. First one again is this Thursday. Staff is working on code enforcement in regards to city light, the 2014 comprehensive plan, and revamping the fire department budget. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions regarding the Administration Report? With that, I'm looking for a motion to approve all administrative reports, A through E. Moved by Cahill?
Second.
Second by Fay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next we'll move on to new business and we'll begin with the set MS4 meeting date. I'm going to turn that over to staff.
Yes, so we'll have that meeting at your July business meeting so we just need you to kind of approve that, that we'll have the meeting on that date and then we'll have a little PowerPoint and run through a few items with the council and any interested public members that show up that evening.
So on July 23rd, our 7 o'clock council meeting? Perfect. Thank you, we'll make sure that gets noticed and taken care of. Yeah, we need a motion.
Second by Fay.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the MS4 meeting on Monday, July 23rd at 7:00 PM? Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. All right, next item of business is First Amendment to Downtown Developers Agreement.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. For the past year, the City Council and the Economic Development Authority has been working with, they've been working with GJ Property Management, LLC, with the downtown property. And as part of the agreement that we have with GJ Property Management, they have one year of kind of a grace period to come up with a plan to be able to execute for development of the downtown property that included where Old City Hall was located at, Nelson's. It has been one year, the EDA earlier this month did hear a proposal from the developer and with that was a recommendation from the Economic Development Authority to approve and extend an additional year with this developer, GJ Property Management, to give them another year to complete the project, to move forward with the plans that they've been submitting, to kind of narrow that down and hopefully get something in the ground pretty soon. So with that, this is a development agreement, First Amendment to the Development Agreement, that provides that additional time for them to continue to work on this project. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions pertaining to this amendment to the Development Agreement.
Any questions? Looking for a motion to approve the First Amendment to Downtown Developers Agreement?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Fay?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cahill. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our next item of business is Resolution 18-0625-01, Appointing of Election Judges.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This resolution, as required, we need to approve or appoint our election judges. We have some familiar faces from years past and some new one, election judges as well. So we're looking forward to the 2018 elections. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Councilmember Fay?
Aye.
Councilmember Cahill?
Aye.
Mayor Moskuski?
Aye.
The ayes have it three to zero with Councilmember Broda and Councilmember DeLuca absent.
Our next item of business is Ordinance 297, Amending the City Fee Schedule for Defense Permit.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Anytime there is an adjustment to the city fee schedule which is set by city council, that must be done through ordinance. That's why this is an ordinance in front of the council tonight. Currently, the city had placed a permanent fence fee, six feet or under, per our city code, from, we set that fee at $250. After review, staff did come forward and we have a recommendation to lower that to $50. The main reason why we do have a city fence fee is just to make sure that the fence being established is on the correct property. This is typically a cause for some civil concerns when a fence is put on what the neighbor would deem their property. So, that's really what the charge is for, just to make sure that we can say that, yep, this is correct, thank you for running it through the process. And then we have note of that at City Hall. So with that, we would like to recommend the approval of lowering the ordinance, or lowering the fee schedule for a permanent fence from $250 to $50. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'll make that motion. All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Oh, do you need to roll? Sorry.
Councilmember Fay?
Aye.
Councilmember Cahill?
Aye.
Mayor Moskuski?
Aye.
The ayes have it three to zero with Councilmember Broda and- The ayes have it three to zero with Councilmember Broda and Councilmember DeLuca absent.
Thank you. And next item of business, we'll have our council reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Fay.
Well, I too, evented, or attended the Herky Lift 50th Anniversary Ceremony. Glad to have them, long-term business partner in town. It was a beautiful day, great food, ran into a lot of people. Beginning of the month, we had our Party in the Park, I know we talked about it, put a lot of time into it, it was very successful. Final numbers aren't in, but I suspect somewhere between about $6,000 and $9,000 would be the net effect of monies that will be kept with Orno Rotary and ultimately turned over to the city for improvements in the park, specifically the Veterans Memorial. I attended Pioneer Sarah Creek Watershed two weeks ago, we approved our 2019 budget. Our member city dues are going to increase by about $700 over last year, and the reasoning for that is fees are based on market value. Our budget stayed level, but because greenfields' market value took such a hit, it caused everyone else's to, to go up. So, $700, it's not the end of the world. And just a public shout-out to my youngest daughter who's going to turn 18 tomorrow.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Cahill.
I attended the Planning Commission meeting, and the items we discussed will be on our, we're moved to the next council meeting to discuss. Just to note that our July meeting was moved from its regular date to July 12th, so if anyone wants to attend. And then I also attended the Herky Lift 50th Anniversary Open House, and it was really great to see the facilities and see everyone who turned out to support, you know, a longtime business in the community, so congratulations to Herky Lift.
Thank you. It's been a busy month, I've been able to attend the Rotary with Councilmember Fay, and again, we're wrapping up Party in the Park. Also have been able to attend the West Hennepin Chamber of Commerce where Garrett from Elamcare and I did a little presentation on Elam coming into Gateway and how that's going to affect the businesses in our downtown, and we're excited about that. And then also, Councilmember DeLuca and I met with the Personnel Committee, and then I was able to, last week, spend three days up in St. Cloud at the League of Minnesota's Annual Conference, so since I was there for three days, I get to share three points. It was a great conference, it was worth every minute. The main speaker was Paul Schmitz, and Paul wrote a book called Everyone Leads: Building Leadership From the Ground Up, and just something, you know, when we're out and about and interacting with people, I'm just that everyone is a leader, and that leadership is an action, it's not sitting, it's an action. And the main theme was all on strengthening communities through meaningful engagement and collaboration, so look forward to bringing some of that back to the team and having some good discussion. And then as a council, we've all been really busy, we've had workshops, tour the water treatment plant, looking at things that we'll need to upgrade in there to take care of our infrastructure and ensure we all have clean water, and then also EDA, so everyone is doing a great job and reading a lot and going to a lot of meetings. Councilmember DeLuca regrets not being here tonight, he had a Rotary commitment, and Councilmember Broda is taking care of himself as he's not feeling too well, so we missed them both. Any other business to report from council or staff? Right, with that, we do have one visitor to be heard tonight, I received a note from Judy, so please come forward and state your address.
My name is Judy Sutherland, and I live on Main Street East, and I wanted to just give you my perspective as a landscaper's wife. We've been in business 54 years, and I know that you're probably aware of a lot of this, but every day I drive by Meadows something or other, the development behind the bank. And in the spring, I wish my brain wouldn't see all this stuff, but I see it as the landscaper. In the spring, I look at these houses, and where Karen Grandstraff, where her house was built, they dumped the dirt to the east of her house, so she looks out her window to this great big pile of dirt, and there's two-by-fours laying on it, and the same with the house behind Jerry Ree, the first one off from Howard Avenue. And, you know, the summer goes by, and now the weeds are so tall, of course, you don't see it, and I noticed that they weed-whipped or went like four feet around the edge. Well, I don't know if anyone even really looks at it enough to realize that you can't get in and mow it, so who is ever in charge? It's got to be leveled first, those piles, all the lumber taken out, and that just should have been done the minute they built that house, but, you know, either the guy that owns it didn't care, or the, because they're all individual builders, maybe they didn't care, but those piles have been there, and it can't be mowed, I mean, there's other junk in there, and I just wanted to let you know that that's what I see as the issue, in the spring, you see the pile, and the two-by-fours laying all over the pile. Now the weeds are tall, and yeah, they should be cut, but a tractor, we cut the weeds, we used to cut it behind the, what was the senior citizen high-rise there, or Maple Terrace? You know, we knew there was nothing back there, we'd take our eight-end tractor and you'd mow it, well, you can't do that with any of this property because of all the junk piled up, so I just thought I'd let you know, that's what I see as the landscaper, and I was wondering, are they going to eventually put in the kids' park that was supposed to go in, or is that still an ongoing issue with them?
Yeah, it's, it's one of the things that we've been talking about, yeah.
On the list.
Including maintenance, I know we've reached out specifically, not just for final punch list items that we've been working on, but also with the maintenance of that development with the developer, so.
Yeah, the, the property, because how do you sell it when it's all weeds? I mean, that isn't even attractive.
It's a poor marketing strategy, I can tell you that, it doesn't work out when the property doesn't look very good.
Right.
Now, it's something we'll continue to work on, and hopefully, something's done there, even if they got to go in and weed-whip.
Right, the whole thing.
That's, and that might be what they have to do, so.
It is, and to spray it now would be terrible, because then it'd all be dead, it's, it's got to be done first thing in the spring and kept up, but, and then I was wondering, is Elam, or Illiam?
Elam.
Is it, are they a nonprofit?
No. Well, they are, they're a private group, they, they would be, they, some of what they do is nonprofit, I don't believe all of it is, is that the best way to sum it up? Yes.
Because I know people ask me, and I, I look on their website to see if something's nonprofit, so.
Yep.
So parts of it is, probably.
Yeah, they do a wide scale of services and the care they offer to different age groups in different situations.
So it's different taxes for our city, it's not just a nonprofit that we don't?
Do you want me to?
Okay.
So if you, if you get asked, it's a good question, they are technically, their corporation is a nonprofit entity, but as it relates to property taxes, which is what I'm assuming most people are getting at.
Right, that's why.
So the facility that they would build is, different portions of the facility do pay taxes, do pay full property taxes, so for example, the independent living and assisted living portions of their facility are taxed according to their valuation, just like anything else, so the nonprofit status doesn't kind of override. But there are portions of their facility that, that may not be taxed the same way that a private entity would, but, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
The project will be beneficial when it comes to the, what they provide the community once it's built. I think that's probably the best way I can work that for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. With that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Fay.
Second.
Second by Cahill, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meeting's adjourned at 7:42. Help yourself to healthy snacks.